November meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in my nation. Under God, indivisible, et in terra nata.
Welcome, everyone, on a chilly night. For those that are new to the proceedings of the zoning board of appeals, the meeting will be divided into two halves. In the first half, we will hear, we will have public hearings on each of the applications before us. In each case, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, to state their name, and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask the applicant to give us just a very brief summary of what the reason for the request for a variance or a special use permit is. At that point, every member of the ZBA will have an opportunity to ask questions. When the members of the board have finished with their questions, the floor will then be open to anyone from the public who wishes to address that application, but that application only. And again, in each case, people that wish to make comments must come forward, state their name, and to be sworn in. We're going to take the applications in the order in which they're printed on the agenda. If you wish to have a copy of the agenda, they're available in this little black tray that's by our council's desk. When we've held public hearings on each of the applications and then closed them, we'll then shift to the second half of the meeting, and this is the deliberation phase. During this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public, or anyone, really. The board will discuss the merits of each of the applications and then proceed to a vote. Although it's closed to public input, you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. And just for the record, one of our members, Art Grace, is unable to attend tonight's meeting, so Paul Lay, one of our alternates, will be a regular voting member. Item number one, Margaret Mosca, 50, Homer Place.
Hi, I'm Anthony Roselli, I'm Margaret's husband.
Welcome, sir.
Hi.
Okay, you'll just...
Good evening, everyone.
And so state your name.
Anthony Roselli, 50, Homer Place.
Mr. Roselli, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
Swear to me, yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay, so what brings you here this evening?
We seek a correction of a variance originally issued on 8/12/13. It was based on information that we obtained from a site map that the town had on file. It turns out that we had a survey done 4/24/14, and it proved that there was a problem with the site map. So we're asking to have a correction made on the variance.
Okay. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions, but that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed when I was, when we were out there, that there are essentially two fences along that side. One looks to be new.
Yes.
And that's located pretty much on the property line?
The new chain link fence is six inches off the property line, so there's six inches on the other side. The reason that I left the existing fence was because next door, they have a lot of debris, and it's just fallen over into my yard, and they refuse to clean it, so I said, you know what, I'll leave that, keep the debris. So I can live with it.
Okay, that's, it looks like a chicken wire fence, or...
Yeah, it's like a chicken wire type of...
Okay. And that was located pretty much where you thought the property line was?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, which turned out to be in there.
Yeah, which is wrong, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, I just...
You have copies of the new survey, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Larry, any questions?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Tony?
No question.
Carmen?
Yes, I was just curious about the, when we were out there, I noticed there were like berms, you know, they, it looked like, it looked like a tree, you know?
There is a tree on a property line.
Yeah.
Yes.
But there were some berms on the lawn, like...
Oh, on the hill?
Yeah.
All right, what happened there was, there was, the property when we bought it was not maintained, and it was overgrown, and there was a lot of, I guess, trees that had been decomposing. So every year, I have my landscaper fill in a little bit where it collapses, so that's, we've been just dealing with it.
Oh, okay.
That's all that is.
Yeah, they don't look bad, it looks good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but I couldn't figure out what they were there for.
Any other questions from the board? All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 50 Homer Place? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recused, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Item number two, Robert and Lynn Martin, 6 Carnelli Court. Okay, and we have, Tony is recusing himself, and so Phyllis, you will, as the alternate, will be the voting member on this application. Okay, so if you'd each just state your name?
Robert Martin.
Lynn Martin.
Mr. and Mrs. Martin, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so can you briefly explain your need for a variance here?
Well, yes, I did come here and fill out, I got the property survey before the fence was put up. I got the building permit, it was Sandy approved, for the fence to be installed. The issue is, the fence was installed at different heights on the property, because there's slope of the property, and the stepping procedure that the fence calls for, because it's an eight-foot fence, solid panels, they don't bend to the property angle, so Adams, they did the installation, and they stepped it down as best as they could to the property.
We also have Josh from Adams, if you have any questions.
Okay. And the result is that, at least in places, the fence is more than eight feet above the ground?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me for a moment, but I have a question for our council. In drawing up of the variance, it simply says that to allow an existing fence to remain as built, do we have to specify a height?
I asked the building inspector, or who was for a denial letter or a recommendation letter, and he said that there were a number of places where it was of substantial height, but he didn't have a measurement either, so I don't know that we have a measurement.
Okay, when I was out there, I did make a couple measurements, and the highest point that I could find was, it was 14 inches above eight feet, so it would be nine feet two inches.
My preference would be to have a maximum height, but also, the thought would be, if you conditioned it also on the existing fence, then were there repairs to be made or something, then perhaps the fence could be brought more into conformity, as opposed to allowing it to stay in this way if it were. I understand you, because the fence is built now, it would be more of a hardship, but if it's being repaired, it might be less of a hardship to bring it into conformity.
Okay, so when it comes to actually stating the variance, we can put in...
More than 14 inches of variance of, right, but conditioned upon.
Okay, good, good, all right.
As you can see in the folder, I did have an estimate for the correction to be corrected, with soil brought in, mulch, and shrubbery to landscape the yard. But the town says, no, don't touch anything as of now, it's after this. But I do have an estimate in there from Adams Landscaping to correct the issue.
Okay, that would involve basically raising the height of the land?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, the fence would stay?
Right.
Okay.
I do have three foot on each side, left to right, and a foot in the back.
Okay, okay, all right. So Lisa, then that could, that could be included as a condition if we wished?
If, right, if the, if the fence, if the ground were brought up to meet the fence, then no variance would be needed.
But the town told me I couldn't do that.
In the past, we've had situations where the applicant, or the homeowner, the business owner, put the fence on top of a berm, and we found that that violated our code. So I'm not sure simply that putting a couple of feet on either side would resolve the issue, based upon our prior findings.
Right, artificially raising only a portion of the area surrounding the fence is not necessarily the same as having it be at ground level.
Okay. Okay, well, this is an issue we can discuss, and, okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
The fencing that you have, it comes in eight-foot sections, right? It comes, is it eight by eight?
Eight by eight, solid panels, they don't bend.
Right, and so, and then the little post on top, that's even higher than the eight.
The cap?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I guess, my, I guess my question is, you, they probably, or I'm assuming, I guess, that they explained to you the step system about how they raise them up, et cetera. I almost wonder if you shouldn't have bought a smaller or shorter fence, and then you could have had the whole step thing, and it would have looked, and it would have been fine.
That wasn't explained ahead of time.
No.
Well, you know... Any of that, I don't know.
Yeah, I do have questions for, are you the fence guy?
Yes, I am.
Then can you come up and be sworn in too?
I've often argued this...
Your name, your name.
Actually, and you'll speak into that little microphone?
Turn it on.
Yeah, you can lift it right out.
My name is Joshua Lara, with that.
Yes, no, um...
Okay, I'm gonna try this one. My name is Joshua Lara, from Adams Fences.
Okay, Mr. Lara, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I absolutely do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, when you, when you're talking to people about putting a fence in their yard, are you aware of what the code is? Like, say you're working in the town of Poughkeepsie, are you aware of what the code is?
Sometimes...
So that you can advise them?
In Poughkeepsie, I'm well aware of it, because we do so much work, but not every town, and I always advise my homeowners, if I'm not sure, if they're not sure, to check with their local ordinances.
Okay, so when, now, you go out and look at the parcel?
Yes, I met with Mr. Martin before installation.
So then you would have known the terrain and...
Absolutely.
Yes, all right, so, I'm trying to figure out, I don't think I've seen one as with such a big difference for almost each panel that, like you have in your yard.
It all depends, you know, if you look, if you go from that fence from one end to the other, it depends where it is. Some of the panels are almost level with each other and just off the ground, some are very high off the ground. These sections are locked into square, they can't rack like certain types of fence can, so they have to run square and level as you step down a hill. In the fence industry, it's considered height to measure a fence from the closest point to the ground to the top of the section, not to the top of a post. And if the town is gonna not allow anything to exceed eight-foot high, including the post cap, but allow an eight-foot-high fence, you're now forcing people to buy a custom fence. In this case, it'll probably cost them extra $4,000 or $5,000 to have a fence built six inches lower.
Well, we, I, we've never done that, it just, I found it interesting that it wouldn't be, the post should be that, that eight feet, and then the fence, whatever, the two inches under that. It just seems like it should be easier to buy a fence and have it installed, no matter what the problem is, so that it, you're conforming.
Well, like I said, the industry, you know, all your, all your fence products are made to the even foot, you know, because that's what you're trying to get, six-foot of privacy, not just on the length of a post, but over the course of a panel. So they're building the fence to six-foot high, eight-foot high, seven-foot high, it's made to that height. You know, we're not manufacturing, that's the standard across the country.
Well, you got a standard nine-foot there.
No, there are, there are parts.
Yeah, there are some...
Yep, and it is common practice, not building a berm when a fence is stepped, to then backfill underneath the fence, and I don't see why, you know, what's, what's the definition of ground level?
Well, we don't have that, there's no definition, per se, in the code of ground level.
Exactly, so if you bring in soil, because I don't believe you need any kind of permit to fill in low spots in your yard, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, so once you bring it up, and it's touching, you're at ground level.
I was more interested in knowing whether or not the people know in advance that they're gonna be, gonna need a variance, and she's already shaking her head.
I didn't, I didn't realize a variance would be needed, so you know, when Mr. Martin and I discussed, we discussed different styles of fence, and you know, it was made aware that it's gonna stair-step. I can't go out there and mock up every section during an estimate with a line level, and you see exactly how they're high. And I always say too, if you look at the fence, you can see in the spirit, wasn't to get it up to nine feet, you can see the other side of the fence is much closer to the ground, and we're going for the most consistent flow possible. I always joke around too, I sold the town of Poughkeepsie about a dozen fences this year that exceed 10, 12, and 16-foot high.
What we've, how many did we see on this last field trip? All of a sudden, they were everywhere, the exact, that same step?
Mm-hmm.
Thing.
No, I'm saying, I sold the town of Poughkeepsie about 10 or 12 fences that exceed 10, 12, and 16-foot high this year, without variances.
Wow, that's nice.
20 feet high over Crestview Park.
Okay.
Okay, and I've asked Mike, Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Lara. I'm sorry, in my packet, I don't have the estimate for what it would cost not to do all the landscaping and everything, but just a few sections that exceed, are above the ground by, by more than a foot, how much would it cost to lower those panels?
Well, you really can't, they're where they need to be, you'd have to custom-cut the panels themselves down and...
Well, the ones that are stepped, they insert, the panels insert into the post?
Yes.
Okay, so where do those, the rabbits, or wherever the panel goes into the post?
Yeah.
Where do those, how do you locate those?
This is a vinyl fence, it's a pre-built product, so the post is routed at three spots in this fence, a bottom rail?
Right.
And then two rails towards the top.
Okay, so you just set the post where you want the bottom of...
Yeah, because one section dictates the next, you're actually, normally, if you're doing a fence that can be either racked, or if it were flat and level, you'd be ordering your posts as aligned posts, where they're routed on each side of the post. In this case, we had to order every one as an end post, and we went through and routed each post as we went, because you don't know where the height's gonna fall exactly. So you can't change one without changing the one next to it, changing the one next to that, it's all or nothing.
My recollection was that a couple of the panels that were along the area where the RV is, on that wall, on that side, there were one, or perhaps two, that were, that you could have lowered on the post, is that, am I correct in that? I think you could have stepped a couple of those ones along that line.
Maybe technically a little bit, you know, it's all, there's an aesthetic we're going for also. We want the fence to function, to, like I said, if you look at the overall job, you'll see there's no intent to deceive or try to get away with a higher fence.
I don't think anybody's staying there, it just violates the code, so we're trying to find a way to resolve that. Is it possible now to lower those steps, or is that completely impossible?
Like I said, now everything's custom-cut, and in line and running level, cutting one cuts the one next to it, cuts the one next to it, it's dominoes.
Okay, then that's all I have.
Okay, Phyllis?
And if you could state again why the fence had to be stepped, why could not it have been...
Racked?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, there's, certain types of fence, like a wood stockade fence, or a very basic vinyl fence, they have what's called rackability, they come as a square or triangle, and you can actually go like this, or this with them, to make them conform to the hill, and so on. In the case of this fence, when you have the decorative top and the extra rail at the top, it locks that section into square. Plus, with the decorative top to it, you don't want that running at an angle necessarily, it distorts the look of it. And the reason the Martins wanted the decorative top was to give a softer look for their neighbors, and themselves.
Why is it that when you put the basic fence posts in, before you attach the panels, why could they not have all been set at the same height that would have met the standard for the variance?
Because, is there something I can draw on?
Uh-huh.
If you, if you're on a hill, and you, you know... Be a little street with my slope here, but here's your slope. So if you set this post at eight-foot high, and then eight-foot further down, you have another post, and you set that eight-foot high, but it drops a foot over those eight feet, now this panel will be a foot above this post.
So it's really got more to do with the lay of the land, so to speak, than anything else, as to why the fence is out of compliance?
Absolutely, and that's why typically homeowners in this situation, you don't fill before, because you'll end up bringing a lot more fill than you ever will need. You know, it's common practice for people to fill in these, they don't always do it, but when they're going for an aesthetic, it's common to go in after, because you usually need a lot less fill.
And other than aesthetic, is there any point in putting the dirt up to the lower panel of the, you know, to the bottom of the fence? Other than aesthetic, what, is there a point?
No.
Okay. Because it's not... It wouldn't necessarily lower the fence by raising ground, no.
Why wouldn't it?
Sure.
The fence is measured from that ground, directly above where it's sitting.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Carmen?
Jim, I just have a question for you. How come they didn't have to come before the zoning board to get a variance anyway? Because it's eight, nine feet, this fence.
They're allowed eight, they're allowed eight.
Yeah, yeah.
And they thought they were putting up feet?
No, actually, we went and checked, and the code says that in rear yards, you can have up to eight.
You can have up to eight.
Eight, eight feet, yeah.
Okay, and now I have a question for you folks. What was the purpose of the fence? Because it certainly isn't, isn't closed in for protection or anything.
It will be.
The front part.
What?
It was for privacy.
Privacy, the back.
The front isn't.
The front's not done yet, because we were stopped.
Oh, there's more to go?
Picket fence along the front.
Oh, that's a lot of fence.
Picket, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's going to...
So right now, the job's half-done, because everything was stopped.
Right.
You know, I got the estimate for the rest of the fence, I got the estimate to fill, backfill the fence with shrubbery, but everything was stopped, so we're at a standstill right now, waiting for this to be resolved.
Uh-huh.
But there is another section of fence that we're gonna go in the front, which is a picket fence, four foot.
Right. Okay, so...
And I do have dogs, which will run.
Hey.
They're gonna run right under that fence.
Not if I backfill it, if I get their approval, if they're not.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So you, you have your, your dog that's going to beep?
I got two dogs.
Lost in?
German.
Yes.
Uh-huh. No further questions?
Okay. Anyone else on the board have a question? Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishes to address the application at 6 Carnelli Court? Yes, sir, please come forward.
If you don't mind, so may I approach?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
This is going to be clear, so that we can follow along.
Okay.
Do you want to use that microphone?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, I think you can take it out of the holder.
How's it going, Joshua? Good, how are you?
And, let's see, is it on? Just try.
It's on. My name is Jim Silvins, 1148 Pleasant Ridge Drive.
Mr. Silvins, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
I understand. My backyard butts Mr. Martin's backyard directly. On my side of the fence, and if you look at the first page, there is a ladder that is on my side of the property, which is six-foot high. That is Mr. Lauer's worker's ladder. You can clearly see that the fence behind that ladder is at least nine feet. If we go to the second page, those workers, you can clearly see, one of them is standing on a ladder, and his head does not reach the top of that fence. The third one is my backyard, as I see it from my deck, Mr. Martin's fence runs the full length of my property, and then beyond on each side. I am six-foot-one, I'm standing in front of that fence, and you can clearly see that that fence is at least four feet above my head. At the bottom of the fence, you can see where it is nowhere close to the ground. I measured that fence. On my side of the fence, the lowest point to the top of the fence is nine foot six inches. The highest point is eleven foot six inches to the top of the post. My backyard looks like a prison. The only thing missing from this fence is the barbed wire on the top. It's offensive. The people to the left of us, although they didn't come out here tonight, they have an eight-foot fence. Mr. Martin's fence is on the opposite side of their fence, and stands at least three foot high from that.
That one's only six feet tall.
Josh, you yourself were at my property when you estimated for my fence, and I said...
Sir, you must address the board.
I'm sorry.
And we can't have, we can't have...
As a matter of fact, Josh Lauer was at my property to estimate for a fence for me, and I personally spoke with this man, and I said to him, look at the size of this fence, and he said to me that he spoke with the owner, and the owner was insistent that the fence be installed. I have an eleven-foot-six-inch fence in my backyard. Mr. Martin filled his side of the property with rocks, so that when you're on his property, you would look at the fence, it does not look that high. On my fence, I am no small man, I could easily climb under it. At some points, it's more than two feet high from the ground. If we get a variance for this fence, I'm sorry, board, then I want to put an eleven-foot fence around my property, and we can all live like prisoners. It's, I assume you went out to Mr. Martin's property, but nobody came over to my... my side to look at what's going on. Eleven foot, six inches. The posts are... It's amazing. I'm shocked that this happened. I really am. And I'm frustrated.
Okay, just one moment, sir. Christine, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
I'm just wondering what we can do with it.
Okay. Larry, Paul?
No, I have any questions.
Okay, Phyllis?
No, no questions.
I'm going to fleech it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wish to address the application at 6 Carnelli Court?
I, I have one more question, I'm sorry, for the fence guy. Does this same fence come in six-foot sections?
Yes, it does.
It does.
Comes in four-foot second, any height you want.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Let's see, do you, do you folks have any, anything further you want to add?
I don't know, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right, if there are no other questions from the board or from the public, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second, aye.
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 Opposed? Recusals? Oh, there was one recusal, yes. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, this brings us to item three. Brian and Christine Highland, 5 Hollow Lane.
How are you this evening?
Good evening. And your name is?
Brian Highland.
Mr. Highland, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I certainly do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
I understand.
Okay, and you're here for a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment?
Yes.
Okay, you want to tell us a little about it?
Sure. We, my wife and I purchased a home, and our mother-in-law is elderly now. She had a couple of complications, and she couldn't go up and down the stairs in her house anymore. So, we sold her house at the same time to move in with us, and we wanted to find a property where we could build an accessory apartment for her on the ground floor, so that there would be no more stairs. So, it is a mother-in-law, and she currently is with us, and she sold her house as well.
Okay, Christine?
No questions.
Eddie?
I have no questions.
Okay. Just so we're sure, we understand, the accessory apartment is going into what is now the basement, really?
Yeah, yeah. Right now, the house is, is actually owned for the finished basement, and it's just going into there. The garages and everything are staying the same. So, it's just going to be that finished basement area.
Okay, and you're going to create a new door in the rear that will be the main entrance in and out of the apartment?
Yeah, we're going to create a, a door there. We're also going to enlarge the size of the windows for the egress for the bedroom, and we also, she also has another way out in, in the back where she can get to the garage. So, there'll be three.
Okay. Larry?
Questions?
Paul?
No, no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
Oh, no questions.
Okay. And you filled out, there's a checklist of items, and you, you, you meet all of the requirements of the code. I won't go through them separately. I just had one question on that, and that's, how will the apartment be identified for emergency services? And you said it'll be the same as the house address?
Yeah, that was, that was a question that I asked, and I wasn't sure either. So, I was hoping that I could get clarification when I was actually filling out the paperwork. I didn't know if I needed to make it a B, or we weren't sure.
Yeah, and then you can call 911. County, no.
That, that, that's B, so it's around the back, okay.
Right.
They'll confirm that with you, because you'll have to obviously look them up.
Okay, yeah, no, that was just one that we weren't sure.
Okay, so, so, so I guess the answer that it will be identified as required by 911. Okay, fine. Okay, so I think that takes care of all of the items there. Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, anyone in the audience wish to address the application at 5 Hollow Lane? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, Daniel Bova, 52 Carmant Drive. Okay, and your name?
Good evening. My name is Michael Berta. I'm the architect for the applicant.
Mr. Berta, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
No problem.
Okay, so you've designed an addition?
Yes.
Okay, you want to...
What we, what we have here is a little bit about the lot is, excuse me, as you can tell, it's a, a corner lot. So, because of that, we have two rear yards. And based on, the other issue that we have going is based on the location of the house, which is being placed towards Carmine Drive, and the, the odd position, or the odd shape of the lot, it's leading us to having two rear yards. So, you know, the addition that we had planned is in the rear of the house, or what, what is basically conceived as the rear of the house. And it's also the furthest point away from Minetti Drive. So, it's the most logical spot, given also the existing locate, the existing layout of the house, you know, to, to locate the addition. Because on the, the one side, you can see where the driveway is, the bedrooms are located on the side that we have, and that we've placed the addition. And we're, since we're a three-bedroom house, one of the, the back bedroom, we're, we're actually reusing that as, towards a, a master bathroom, and using that as accessway into the new bedroom.
Okay, so essentially, that the addition couldn't be placed anywhere else?
Correct. You know, give, like I said, given the existing layout of the house, because we're, we're, right now, where the bedroom is in the back, you have the bedroom, bathroom, the dining room in the rear of the house, plus the kitchens on the other side. Then you have the garage and the mudroom. So, it's, really isn't any other spot that we could put it.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Betty?
I have no questions.
All right, Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
No, I don't have a question.
Tony?
No questions.
And Carmen?
I have no questions.
Okay. If, if I recall correctly, the, the property that is in the rear is, it's heavily wooded, as I recall.
Two sides, the, the side yard and the, the rear, you're pretty much the entire, the entire side yard, that entire property line is pretty well wooded.
Yeah, okay.
And then quite honestly, even the rear of the property, a hundred and fifty-some-odd feet away, is, is wooded as well. You know, the, the actual property that we're up against actually goes all the way towards Vassar Road.
To Vassar Road, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very large piece of property that we're actually... And then we have, the fifty-foot section in the front is to the actual neighbor, but his house is, I don't know for sure, but I want to say it's three or 400 feet away. I mean, there's a, there's a, a large distance in between.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my recollection. Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 52 Carmant Drive? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Item number five, John and Laura Agard, 2 Marwood Drive. Good evening, and if you'd just state your name, please?
My name is Amanda Rep.
Amanda Rep, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and would you briefly explain your connection with...
Sure, sure. I work with RL Baxter, and we are the construction company for the project. I'm here tonight just representing the homeowners.
Okay. Okay, so would you kind of give us a quick overview of the project?
Of course. This project is an addition to the rear of the home. The Agard family has a young daughter with disability, and it requires kind of eyes on the child at all times. Their current kitchen is separated from the living space and the dining area, and so this addition is situated toward the, towards the rear, enlarging the kitchen, enlarging the dining room, and just have, allowing the homeowners to have their daughter in with them.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Okay. Okay, and... Tell me again, the, the new addition is going to include...
It's going to enlarge the kitchen, and then have a, a little dining area onto, off to the side as well.
Oh, okay, okay. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
No, no questions.
Tony?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application at 2 Marwood Drive? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, item six is Dr. Sadish Modi, 23 Davis Avenue.
Are we going to take testimony on this?
Hmm?
Are we going to take testimony on this?
Um, this is, this was basically up to the applicant.
I'm going to recuse myself then.
Okay. All right, Phyllis? Okay. While, while you're getting set up, let me just, just announce for the public that we'll be able to, to take testimony and to have a, a public hearing, but we will have to adjourn the public hearing to next month because this is also before the planning board, and they have not yet made a determination on the environmental impact. But once, that's, that's no reason for us not to hear, hear the testimony now, but we will simply adjourn the public hearing so people can come next month if they have comments they want to make. Okay?
Understood. My name is Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering, the engineer for Dr. Modi.
Mr. Berger, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you kind of give us the, the short tour of the project here?
This is Dr. Modi's building over on 23 Davis. He's an ophthalmologist. He basically, due to wanting to add space, so his, with new technology, his, the space per, patient ratio is too small. His, the new machines and things take up more room than ever before, so he needs more space just to treat the patients properly. His staff is sitting next to each other. It's not as properly and productive as possible. He's not planning to expand his practice more as to keep it the same, same patient load, but more efficient, more room, nicer place for the patients to wait. And ophthalmology, as you may know, people go in for cataract surgery, my mother just went through that, it takes a long time. So, people drop their parents or their, you know, their relatives off, they're there all day, and then they get picked up later. It's not like a eye doctor where you go in and out, or a typical doctor where you have a physical. So, you need that extra space so that the patient sits here, that the exam gets done, and the procedure gets done, and the extra space will be a much improvement to his practice. Thus, the need to build a, a building on the east side of the site, so that his practice can move over here, which has more space. At the same time, the emergency facility that's there has that same identical problem of needing more space to treat the number of patients they have. So, they came to what's a critical mass situation of two doctors or two uses that are running out of space, which would mean one would have to leave the area, or we need to do something about it. The solution for Dr. Modi is to put his practice over here, allow the, you know, the emergency room to expand into his space. If you over there, the, just the waiting room is way too small for the patients coming in, and those are the things. So, again, at the conclusion of this, there won't be any more patients, it's just going to be a nicer facility. As a result, we looked at the site over here, and to put the building in compliance, to meet the code, would require the building to go closer to the front. And one of the issues we asked the town about, town planning, when we sat down with them, just as a sketch plan, was the town was concerned about parking. We meet the parking standard, but they were still concerned about parking, so we wanted to provide as much parking as we can, so the neighborhood, we wouldn't be impacting our neighbors. Arlington has a very severe parking issue, those of you, you know, you know that. So, by pushing the building back, we can gain these additional parking in the front. If we put everything to the front, we may be able to gain a few spaces, but not the same number that we gain here, plus we lose some nice trees and frontage. Our neighbor to the back is the motel, which is pretty far away. Our neighbor to the east is an apartment building, which we would be screening. So, we're, we're asking for a variance from 20 feet down to 10, so we can move it close to it. We have a fence along the back, and the building will be here, and we'll be fencing it along the sidelines, so that the, anything doesn't affect them. So, that's basically, in a nutshell, why we need it and what we're planning on doing.
Okay, Christine, questions?
Yeah, how many additional spaces will, will be provided in that front area by moving the building back?
In the front area, we're going to be adding one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 10 additional spaces.
That's it, thank you.
Nope, that was my question.
Okay. It's a one-story building?
It's a two-story building.
Two-story building?
Yes.
Okay. Now, wait, the existing buildings are just one-story, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Had that been built with two-story, we wouldn't be having, if it was built as a one-story. So, that's pretty much box us in with the construction. Okay, okay. Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
I just wanted to clarify for me again about the, the parking spaces. It, it looked very tight when we were out there.
It is tight. They, they seem to work, though. We've done the curves and done the traffic analysis. We are going to be opening them up, so there'll be a little bit more room over in here, and we're adding the new spaces in front of the new building, right, which would be on the south side of the site.
You think that'll be enough?
We're two over what the code needs. We're adding, and we're not adding any additional use. We're basically the same number of patients, and we're adding spaces to what it is now. We did a survey, checking out the site for over a month, to show how many spaces were missing, and very, very infrequently do we max out. The town also did their own independent study. I haven't gotten a result on that yet, but their town engineer sat out there for a week counting cars to see. We're confident he came to the same conclusion we did, where very rarely did we find that we were maxed out, but we feel the additional 10 spaces are going to give us that ability to fill that in.
But we feel the additional 10 spaces are going to give us that ability to fill that in. That's why we're going there. We were sensitive. Instead of saying we don't need any more spaces, we, from the get-go, recognized that there was a concern and what's, as best we could to, and you're right, some of these are tight, so we pushed these a little further out so they're making this turn a little bigger. So there are some changes to the site plan, which are not relevant to the variance, but we did move out these spaces here and these spaces here got pulled out a little further because it is tight in there now. These are about five or six feet closer than they are now. We're pushing them up to the property now for exactly what you caught, they're a little tight. So we're expanding them.
Okay, thank you.
So we are adding some room. Because when we put the curves on there to check it out, we said, "That's a little tight, so why don't I move these this way, move these this way, make that flow a little easier."
Okay.
So not only are we adding spaces, we're reconfiguring some of the existing alignment to make it an easier drive-through.
Mm-hmm, all right, thank you.
Okay, Phyllis, you had a question?
Yeah, just, you've referenced a couple of times the doctor and the patient load. So how many patients does he see on average? Do you have a sense of that? And how many spots are you going to have for his business total, parking spots?
What the, what we did?
You're adding 10, but how many will you have?
Well, they're both buildings together. They're not going to be, these are the doctors and these emergencies. They work together. That way you don't have, you don't have them delegated to one or the other use. Both uses will be able to use the entire, there's not going to be just the doctors and these just the emergency place. Anybody can park. And that's why we did our survey to see how many spaces were used.
And how many?
About a third of the spaces are used by Dr. Modi, as best we can tell. But it's hard to tell because people walk in, he's only seen five or six patients at a time.
And how many will you have in the whole, you know, complex there? How many spots will you have in the whole place?
I believe 75.
Okay.
Okay, so there's no additional doctors or staff?
No, no additional staff in either.
Okay. I do have a question about the, so it's going to be 10 feet from the two property lines, the new building?
It's going to be 10 feet from the rear and five from the side. That's what the side yard's allowed. The rear has a 20, the side has a 5.
Okay.
So we're at five on the side and we're at 10 in the rear.
Okay, and you said there was going to be some screening that was going to go in there?
We have a fence here along this side and fencing along here, it's really, we felt no need for a fence in here because you have this beautiful building right there with no windows. There's, you know, didn't see a need for blocking them in. That way they have some lawn and stuff in there that doesn't affect them. But right in here, where we feel there's a need for it, we're putting a fence from the building corner out.
Okay.
With some landscaping.
I mean, this is really an issue that the planning board will address.
I mean, if, yeah, if the planning board or?
A blank wall is, well, what you want to have next to an apartment building. But like I said, that's a planning board issue.
And we'll certainly accommodate. Fence is not going to be a break for my client. We just thought a nice-looking building facade is not going to be ugly, would be nice. But if the planning board or your board wants a fence, we're not, we're not going to say no.
Well, that's not our call.
I understand, but that's?
But I just, you know, what is an issue is how close to the property line it is.
Yes.
Part of that has to do with, well, what are you going to use that space for, if anything? Okay, but you answered the question, so.
The reason we're holding the five feet here is so we can have that extra, pull that parking out. That's exactly, we felt, one of the reiterations was making this further away and we're saying, well, any distance here crimps it here. So we're trying to provide, having a couple more feet here won't matter. This is a park, as you drive, this is a driveway and that's a parking lot right here. It's not a lawn or anything. That's where they park their cars.
Yeah.
So they park their cars facing right here anyway. So.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, I mean, we'll be coming back to this next month anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, all right. So anyone in the audience wish to address the proposal at 23 Davis Avenue? Dr. Modi, okay, not?
Oh, someone raised their hand.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Hello?
State your name, please.
Mary Mulligan.
Ms. Mulligan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help your guy?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm a neighbor. It's a lovely residential street with trees, Davis Avenue. I appreciate very much the work of the doctors. Many family members have gone to the doctor over the years. My concern or question would be about, a two-story building would be about the noise of the equipment, the noise level, and also about lighting.
Okay, all right.
May I?
Sure, certainly.
I'll start with the lighting. Lighting will be pretty much the same way it is right now. Even though we're adding some parking along the south side, it will be soft. We meet dark skies requirements, but the best way to describe it would be you go out there now and see what you see now. That's what you're going to have, no more, no less. The lighting that's there is going to be tweaked and moved around, but it's going to stay the same. Dr. Modi's business is by five, he's out of there. So probably a wonderful neighbor in the sense of, he's not there at nighttime, not during the weekends. There is no sound of any equipment, being an ophthalmologist. It's all inside the building. You don't hear it. You don't hear it now, you don't hear it later. Some air conditioning units, of course, but at nighttime, they go down in usage because no one's in there. A heater doesn't make much sound at all as the best way to impact, judge the impact of the new building would be to go out and we recommend the neighbors in the town to go and listen to the building the way it is right now. It's going to be a similar building, similar environmental issues. And we feel the sound is going to be negligible, even if you could tell. When I'm there, I couldn't tell. And again, the lighting is exactly what it is now.
Okay, okay.
So how many lights light the parking lot now?
Let me count them. There's one here. There's going to be a couple on the building facing this way. These are going to be lit by the existing small lantern lights that are along the road, so no new ones here. And we got the lighting that's on the building right here. And there's one light right around in here. So there's not that many, two or three.
So you'll have the extra lighting that's on the new building that's going up?
Yeah, just the, well, actually what these will be doing here will be replacing the one that's right there now. That is going to come down. There's actually a lamp, a light pole right about here where parking is going to be right in the middle. We'll take that down, replace it with the light on the building.
So is the?
So it's pretty much, it's again, really, we're building right in the area, which is right there already, just reconfiguring it. The building's going in the area where there's trees. So we're not going to add any significant increase. We're altering the light, moving it a little bit. It's pretty much going to be the same footprint as what's there now.
But you're going to take trees down?
Yes, we're going to take trees in this area here.
And is the, so that'll impact how the light leaves the compounds or the doctors' offices? And so then, do the lights go off at night or do they stay on?
No, they stay for security reasons, I think, it's swaying. But the building will be actually more of a block than the trees, especially in the winter when the leaves go down. So lights come here, won't go past this building.
Will a building be lit at night?
Only this one here going in this direction and this one going in?
No internal lights?
No, internally, they go off. I mean, you'll probably see the cleaning person lights go on, but minor. It's the same, and pretty much the way it is right now, with another building over here. But this building itself will have, block anything from going this way or going this way. On this side, up higher across this fence is the motel, which has a, you know, it's about way out here. And over here, this is the apartment building right here. So this apartment building sees everything right now already because the trees are back behind here.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the board and no one else in the audience, is there a motion to adjourn item number six to our December meeting, which will be December 11?
December? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, and there was one recusal. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number seven, Industrial Retro, 15 Victory Lane.
Good evening, Joshua Mackey, Mackey, Budson, Wise.
Jeff Kane, representing Industrial Retro LLC.
Mr. Mackey, Mr. Kane, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help your guy?
I do.
We do.
Please, please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so, gentlemen, kind of explain what you're proposing here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two lots of record that we're discussing here. One is a 39.16 acre parcel owned by Metaview Properties LLC. And the other, I'm sorry, it's a 36.41 acre by Metaview. And the other is a 4.6 acre parcel owned by Industrial Retro LLC. And the, it's a lot line revision, changing this one lot line to put this part of the parcel, Industrial Retro Parcel, into the same ownership as the larger Metaview parcel. So it would create, at the end of the lot line revision, a parcel that's 39.16 acres and this is a 1.85 acre parcel. So it's a very, again, a very kind of minor lot line revision. Some history, obviously, on the parcel. This Industrial Retro Parcel created in 2008. There is an existing site plan approval on the parcel, although no, no construction is proposed on either of these parcels as a result of this application. But as part of creating this parcel, the town asked for an easement to go from Victory Lane onto this parcel, to connect Victory Lane to this larger Metaview parcel. So that essentially is what this creates, is that line, that 50-foot easement will now become part of Metaview Parcel. It was always there to benefit the parcel, so this really effectuates that easement that was asked for. And that, and that has been, both this portion of Victory Lane and that 50-foot easement have been offered to the town as a town road. That session deed is part of the information which we provided to the board here. So we're really just, again, looking to change that little bit of the lot line. It does create a non-conforming parcel here. Instead of the four-acre minimum, it would be 1.85 acres. And the lot depth changes, instead of 400 feet in depth, we have 262.99 feet, so just under 263 feet of depth there. But it doesn't change the buildable, doesn't change the building footprint, really, on that parcel because this whole portion of the parcel is unbuildable. There are wetlands, there's an existing archaeological easement. So again, it doesn't change any of the buildability of that site. It just simply moves the ownership from one parcel to the other.
Okay. Christine?
So can you have an easement without breaking off that 1.85 acres?
The easement currently exists. And really, what, these two parcels are in common but not exact ownership. There's some, between the two LLCs, there's some different ownership. This easement was always to benefit the Metaview parcel. And in fact, were this to be, were the town to take this session to create the town road there, that would in itself create a subdivision and divide this piece off. So we're really, at the end of the day, effectuating what the town looked for in 2008 to allow that easement and that access onto this parcel.
Betty?
So basically, you need three variances. You need one to create the lot for 1.85 acres instead of?
Four, correct.
Four acres. And you need a second variance because you don't have the 400 feet of, on the road property.
400 feet of?
Of frontage, right. And then you need, and then you need a third variance because you don't have any frontage on a highway or an improved street.
That's true.
Okay, so it's three, right?
Well, one of the variances is for lot depth, so?
Right, oh, I'm sorry.
So we're sort of rolling in the 280, the no-road frontage and the frontage requirement into. So basically, it's one for a substandard lot to create a 1.85 acre lot. It's one for lot depth. And then it's one for, now I've lost my train of thought.
Highway frontage.
Thank you. Okay.
It's three, we create three, okay.
And again, the frontage, should the town, you know, take that portion of Victory Lane, the frontage would go away. But again, the town hasn't yet taken it. I don't believe, and in the research we've done, the lot depth, 400 feet depth, wasn't a requirement at the time this lot was created. It's been a new addition into the code in the IH zone. I should remark, this is in the, the parcels are all in the IH zone, all of this parcel. So that changed. So again, that was something that came up new as the zoning changed.
If I can actually, I had a couple of questions. When you measured lot depth, I noticed that you measured it originally from the front, the existing road, but I think if your access to the parcel is going to be the private street, then the front, the depth would be measured that way, which is how I noticed it. Do you disagree with that?
No, and I believe that's where the 263 is measured there, yes, that's right.
Okay, and can you expand for me on the archaeological easement and sensitivity for seeker purposes?
I was not part of the application at that point in time, so I'll say what little I know. But in this little triangle of land here, which would be, again, here on part of the larger lot, there is a, there was something, some archaeological sensitivity noted when this application came through. And don't know what it is, don't know anything other than, there was something which, should you wish to disturb this area, would require further investigation for cultural resources.
That's on the front parcel, which is not part of the application, so it wouldn't be, the 1.85 acre lot that's potentially buildable would not impact that, correct?
Would not impact that. And what this de-discretion does is says you can't develop unless you do further investigation. But again, there's no intent to do any building there. It's not really an unbuildable portion.
And the wetlands that are referenced in the endangered species, are they also in the front lot so that they would not be affected by the creation of this lot?
Absolutely, yes. The wetland species, the wetland and the species are up in this portion.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Betty?
I'm good.
Okay. I agree, when we went out there, it's pretty clear that the front part is wetland and, you know, the archaeological areas is clearly marked on the maps. It also appeared that the new lot that we're going to be creating is fully buildable. I mean, it looked?
Yes, it's a nice, flat, 1.85 acre piece of land, yes.
Right. But it would still be zoned in the IH?
Correct. This doesn't change the zoning on either parcel, either the piece that goes to the big, right, they all remain in the IH.
Okay, with all the existing setback requirements and so forth, okay. Are there any current plans to develop that smaller parcel?
There is an existing site plan approval. There is not a tenant that, there's nothing planned on that parcel that is in the foreseeable future.
Okay, but wouldn't you, you'd have to go back to the planning board to, because it's now, you know, essentially a new lot with all of the setback requirements and so on?
Again, there's an existing site plan approval. If a tenant dropped from the sky and wanted to build exactly what is, what is shown in that site plan approval, I believe that they would be able to then ask for a building permit and would not go back. But that was a, again, that was a spec approval so the lot would be more appealing. And so I wouldn't at all anticipate not going back.
And the approval was for what, a? And, and the approval was for what, a, what kind of a building?
It was a, was a two-story, I want to say, 12,000 or 14,000 square foot building, if I remember right.
Okay, a kind of a generic...
Yeah, a generic box, yes. But, but again, it fit on there with the parking and the setbacks, and it all, it all worked with the, with the town code then.
Okay, okay. Because one, one of the issues that we have to deal with, actually, in the, in the environmental review that we'll have to do, has to do with kind of, whether granting this new lot could potentially lead to a more intense use of the, of the parcel. So, but what you're saying is that, you know, there's, there was an existing approval...
Right.
Hasn't, hasn't happened, but given the smaller size, it's hard to imagine there would be a, you know, a more intense use of that.
The conditions where you, where you would have, in the town's code, the best of my recollection, that where you would have additional acreage would allow you to build more is where there's some density requirement. In the IH zone, there, you don't have the requirement that you can build X square feet if you have this big of a lot. That, that, that relationship doesn't exist in the IH zone. And while the, the larger lot is not in the IH zone, it's in, it's in the MHC zone, again, we're not changing the zoning of that, of that little sliver land, so it doesn't, it doesn't add any development density to that lot either. So neither, neither lot gets more development density as a result of this lot line revision.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
No, no questions.
No questions.
No question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought Paul was in deep, deep thought.
I am.
He often is, okay. Tony?
No question.
Carmen?
I, I was just wondering about Victory Lane, is that a new street, really? A new road?
Well, Victory Lane is the driveway to the Poughkeepsie Business Park, and has been offered to the town to become a town road, again, since 2008, but the town has not, has not taken that. So it's not a town road, but could be, at some point if the town were to take it.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application at, I guess, the technical address is 15 Victory Lane?
Yes.
And if you...
Yeah, good evening, I'm Neil Johnson, and I'm one of the owners at our, our facility at 29 Victory Lane in Poughkeepsie.
Mr. Johnson, you have to be sworn.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we are surrounded by this entire proposed development here, and we do have some concerns about creating a smaller lot as to what potential building could be going there. And we do have a high-tech manufacturing facility that's very sensitive to any kind of blasting and vibration. It could affect the process of the machining that we do inside our facility. So we're really not clear about the potential use or construction that's obviously not in front of you tonight, but that is a concern of ours. Before you, you know, approve any kind of variance, we'd like to know what kind of usage and what kind of construction would go on there. I have some comments that I would like to submit to you. You know, the public hearing is still open for the rest of this development right now, I understand?
You mean the larger parcel?
Yeah, yeah, the Metta View property.
Yeah, that, that is before the, the planning board.
The planning board.
And that's actually where your comments would be most helpful.
Right.
We, as the zoning board, are empowered really to look at things like the size of the parcel and, and the zoning issues. The questions about, you know, the, the kind of structure, the, the potential users or whatever, is, is pretty much in the hands of the planning department, and that's really, they're, they're, I understand, just beginning the process of doing this. So I would urge you to attend their meetings...
Sure.
And to, you know, provide your input, input there. For, as, as far as we're concerned, because it, the zoning is not changing.
Right.
So that's really not any, you know, there are no issues for us, except the fact that this is, this is creating a, a new parcel that is smaller than the code...
You're reducing it by over an acre, so...
Yeah.
It doesn't meet the zoning requirements to build on, so you'd have to approve a variance for them to be able to build on that, am I correct?
If they, if they meet the setback requirements, then, then we don't have an issue with it.
Right.
The, the planning board may.
Right.
Okay. And if, for example, somebody should come in at some future date, say, well, we want to build a huge building on this little lot, yeah, then we'd have to worry about, you know, possible variances for setback requirements and, you know, all of the other things, height, bulk, lot coverage, that sort of thing. But whether, whether in some future time, this, this, you know, I don't think it's going to become an open pit mine with a lot of blasting, but...
Well, when they do construction, sometimes you have to...
Yeah, sure, certainly, certainly, and...
So you, you really don't know what, what the future plans are for the facility, right? You're just like, lot line, variance right here.
Yeah, from, from our point of view, if we, if we approve this, then the future uses would be essentially those that are, that are elaborated or delineated in, in the code under this particular, for this particular zone. And as long as the use matches one of those, as long as it meets the setback requirements, then the zoning board has no, no input into it, but the, but the planning board may very well.
You recommend I go to the planning board meetings then and discuss this more?
Yeah.
And I can submit, so the public hearing is still open at the planning board?
It is.
Have they had the first review? Where is it right now in the...
Yes, the, the public hearing is open on the, on the site plan.
For, for the, for the larger parcel?
Right, for, for a separate proposal on the, on the big parcel, yes.
Yes. And as far as I know, there are no zoning issues with the larger project.
The question is whether, I think Jim's question is whether it's anticipated that you'll be back here for anything having to do with the McDonald Heights Town Center project.
We do not anticipate coming back here for the McDonald Heights Town Center project. I would also just, you know, for the, the clear, these are, these are not interconnected, interconnected projects. I mean, we're, it's, yes, that, that project is, is before the, the planning board, we don't anticipate coming to the ZBA, we think all of our, all of our design is within the, within the, within the code. These are not, these are not interconnected projects, they really are two separate applications. One isn't for the benefit, one, one of these applications isn't for the benefit of the other, it's just they are two applications that are, that are before the town genetically.
I still have, I'd like to just make one comment. My brother's my partner, and we own this property here. And you notice there were several trucks accessing this building right here. Today, you notice there's a lot of trucks driving right across our property to access this building. You know, I don't know what this road here is for, it's drawn on the map, there's not a physical road here, but you can see our property line is, is clear right here. However, they're accessing this building, driving across our property, not a big deal, but if you're going to issue a variance here, why can't there be some kind of access to this, this property coming through here rather than cutting through my property? Why can't you use, why can't you use the authority right now?
You're absolutely right.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, okay.
It's all asking.
I, I, I encourage you to, you know, have, have a private conversation about exact, but I just want to remind everybody that that has nothing at all to do with the application that's before us.
I just want to make a, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Anyone else, either on the board or in the audience, wish to address this application?
Can you see the map a little bit?
Oh, I guess, oh, people can't. Yeah, if you...
So this is the current configuration of lots, and this is the future configuration of lots.
Jim, is that being recorded at all?
All right.
Is it being recorded outside?
Screams it off most of the time.
Yes.
And that access road will be accessing the town's stuff.
Okay, again, yeah, I would, I would encourage people maybe, when, when we're done, if, if you'd be willing to kind of set those up out in the, in the lobby, people then could have a look at it. You know, I, I think people naturally want to get some feel for this, but, but again, I can't emphasize enough that what's before us is really an application dealing with the changing of a lot line. And we have nothing to do with the larger project, and, but, you know, I would, I would encourage people that are interested and concerned about this to, to follow this through the, through the planning board. Because it's, I mean, it's a major project, and, yeah, there's, there's, people have questions, and that's good. Okay, but if there are no further questions on the issue of the lot line revision, the, the industrial retro property at, let's see, 15 Victory Lane. Okay, there are no further, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recusals? Okay, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to the end of the public hearings. Does anybody want to take a short recess, or should we...
Minutes or three minutes?
Okay. We are in recess for five minutes. Okay, we're back in regular session. We are now in the deliberation phase, and the first one is Margaret Mosca, 50 Homer Place. It's a variance to allow an existing deck to be located 6.2 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. This is a type 2 action, so there's no environmental determinations that need to be made. This application is essentially to correct an earlier variance that was based on a map that was, had an erroneous lot line. Okay, any discussion?
No.
I think this one is pretty straightforward. I move that the board adopt its findings as follows, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. The board finds that the existing deck will produce no change in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board finds that since this is essentially the correction of an earlier error, that seeking a new variance is the only remedy possible. Three, the board finds that the requested variance is not substantial. It will result in absolutely no change to the existing physical situation. Four, for the same reason, the board finds that there will be no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. And finally, item, issue number five, whether the difficulty was self-created. The difficulty was self-created in the sense that the applicant, some years ago, chose to build a deck. It was arguably not self-created in the sense that it was based on an erroneous map. Okay, so I move that those be the findings. Is there a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay. Christine, do you want to make the motion on the variance?
Yes. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the variance in item one's been made and seconded. There's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the variance is approved. Item number two, Robert and Lynn Martin, 6 Carnelli Court. This would be a variance to allow an existing fence to remain at a height of up to nine feet, two inches above ground level where eight feet is allowed. And I've added this specific height based on the measurements that I made at the time of the, time of the field trip. There's testimony that argues that there are places where the fence is up to 11 feet, six inches, and I believe that's measured to the top of the post. So, one of the discussions we can have is what height should we specify? And then, of course, the larger issue is the variance itself. So, comments?
Mr. Chairman, should the board consider granting a variance? I would suggest that it be in the nature of the existing fence, so that if there were any changes in the future, it could be corrected. That's if the board were to grant a variance.
Okay, so just...
Rather than offer a height, because should it be replaced in the future, then there's the same problem.
Okay, okay. Counsel, would that be proper?
Since the fence is existing, I think we could do that. What I would ask then would be that the planning department would document the fence, maybe with some pictures or something, so that we would have a sense of, we'd have some record, so, because otherwise it would be difficult for a future planning department to know whether the fence had been modified or not.
I think that, you testified that you measured it to nine foot two at the maximum. That's what we got on our field trip, and I think if the record reflected that, I think that would be sufficient, don't you think?
Okay, and we should, based on the testimony, I think that the board heard, maybe say that the measurement is from the applicant's property on that side of the fence, because I imagine it drops off on the other side of the fence, so it might be different, so, but yeah.
Okay.
And one of the reasons, you know, there was some testimony about just adding soil below the fence. In the past, we found that that did not satisfy the code.
Yeah, well, as I recall, at least in one of the cases, the berm had been built first.
Right.
And then the fence was on top of that. I mean, in this case, the fence comes first, and so...
I think also from a technical standpoint, the issue would be whether the berm were created in some way to allow the fence to be higher, or the berm were a result of natural contours, which arguably here, there's a slope and you'd be, since, I'm assuming from the site visit, that some of the fence was actually at ground level where it was level, and then others. So, that would be a distinction that we could build into the resolution that the board could approve, if it were so inclined.
Okay. All right, so the variant, the possible variance now would read, "to allow an existing fence to remain at its present height?"
Yes.
And, period.
Or highest peak, the current highest peak, because it goes up and down, up and down.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Bixby wakes up for no reason.
And I would also make a suggestion that, to the town board, that they define how to measure. I mean, I don't have any problem not including a reasonable decorative post in the measurement.
Right.
But I don't think that our code is clear in that regard. I think it's not unreasonable to say an eight-foot panel makes an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
And ignore the decorative portion of it.
Which, I think we've kind of done in the past. You know, when people have come in for front yard fences, it's the main horizontal run. We don't go to the individual fence post, but, but yeah, it, there's, it's a little fuzzy. Okay.
I was trying to wrap my head around a solution to make it better for both sides. I mean, I hate to make them tear it down, because I'm sure it was very costly to put up, but I also, you know, I feel the neighbor's pain as well on the other side. I mean, he's got that great, that is high and solid, so, but I can't, I can't find a solution in my mind that would help both.
I'm not so sure that a one-foot-two-inch change would make it significantly less oppressive, particularly in light of the cost of correcting it.
Right about that. You could be very right about that, and perhaps it's the style of the fence that makes it so oppressive.
Yeah, I mean, I even thought about, you know, if you remove the top part.
The lattice part, right.
But...
I, myself, I wonder why they don't just dig the fence in so that it's all level at the top, and then dig it into the ground so that it doesn't go like this.
I think there was some issue with some portion of the property being bedrock, and so that, at least for some portion of the property, that was not possible, but that's just from my recollection of seeing the site.
Oh, okay. Well, in, in, in any case, it's there. I mean, hindsight.
What, Chairman, well, what are our options here? I mean... I mean, it's out of the question that we would be...
Yeah, well...
Stating that they had to have a smaller fence?
Yeah, I mean, if we deny the variance, then, then any, any part of the fence that's over eight feet off the ground has to be removed.
It's been a while since I've seen a fence that really demonstrated the compound effect like this one did. I mean, it's incredible. And I, I understand the neighbor's concern, absolutely, but on the other hand, if you're talking about a six-foot fence as opposed to eight to nine, it's still going to have the compound effect, because there's so much fence.
Although the, the, the compound effect is, is, is most, is strongest when you're inside, which is where the applicant is. So, in other words, the applicant has chosen...
Right.
You know, to have this kind of wraparound...
But you heard the neighbor state, that he felt it too.
I did, I did.
And I...
I mean, the, I mean, part of the, I mean, here's where we really come down to the standard that the code sets out, where we have to weigh the benefit to the applicant against the impact on, you know, the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's, that's what we've got to do here.
In this case, that would be very subjective, really.
Of course it is, of course it is.
That's why they pay us the big bucks. That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Okay.
You could make the argument that if we're going to approve this one, it would be hard pressed not to approve every other one that's of low, even though I know it's, each one's on an individual basis. This is the exaggerated version of what's referred to as compound effect, so if we approved this one, it would be hard pressed not to approve any other one that was lower.
Well, that, that is...
If this, if this doesn't qualify, if this qualifies to be approved, then it seems the rule is made for something like this.
Well, the code allows an eight-foot fence. The question is whether, in this application, it exceeds it. It quite clearly does, and then the next question is...
Well, it exceeds it in some places.
Right.
I mean, and that's, and that's, that's part of what makes this complicated to me. You know, if, if, if somebody just went up and, and, and put, you know, a 10-foot fence all the way around, or a nine-foot fence all the way around, that's clearly wrong. Okay, they should have known better, all of this. This is a case where the intent was to put up an eight-foot fence, which is, which is allowed, and in the implementation of that, it exceeds it in many places, and it exceeds it by at least a foot. Okay, now, to me, that, 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 you know, that is not the same as creating, you know, a bigger fence for the sake of wanting a bigger fence. I mean, this is kind of a almost accidental consequence of the original action, which sought to comply with the code. So...
It's partly driven, driven by the topography of the site.
Right.
Or entirely driven by the topography of the site.
Right.
And I don't think it can be, even coming in compliance with the code, if you could do that at a reasonable price, would not change the impact to the, to the neighborhood.
There would still be a large fence.
A compound.
Along, along the whole, yeah.
Maybe some landscaping along that fence on both sides would diminish the effect, you know, like maybe some cedar trees, or something that would keep it from looking so stark.
And the fact that it's white makes it even...
Well, yeah, that makes it a little more pronounced.
He can landscape the other side of the fence.
Right.
Well, the neighbor may be, you know, agreeable to that, just to...
Right, but I don't...
Sure, but you can't condition a variance on anything outside of the property that's the subject property.
My inclination is to, I, I would like, I would like to go back and look at it again, and, and perhaps if we gave them another 30 days, maybe between the fence guy and the applicant and the neighbor, maybe they can come up with some solution to make all sides somewhat agreeable.
I don't, I don't know what a solution...
I don't know either. I mean, obviously, if we knew, we would know what to do already, but... I, I mean, obviously, if we knew, we would know what to do already, but.
Yeah, um.
It, it's really.
I think people have pretty much made up their minds.
For sure. I'm kind of on the fence, huh huh.
Yeah.
And the fact that the neighbor's.
Microphone.
The fact that the neighbor's property, you know, it, it, it's, it's higher on his side, but his land obviously must be, like, like you said, is the topography. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, wow. Well, um. Okay, let's, let's, let's start with, um, with, with Betty's suggestion.
I don't want to go out there again.
I mean, do, are we, are, essentially, are we, are we gonna, are we gonna learn anything more?
No.
By waiting a month?
We're not.
I'm, I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not inclined to, to.
As I understood the fence guy, um, it, it can't be fixed.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know what compromise there could be.
Yeah. Okay.
Did I go out there again?
So, um. All right, can I, can I get, um, a kind of, um, sense, sense of the meeting here? And, um, I guess I'll, I'll begin by saying that, um, this, this is, this is a difficult one, but I'm going back to the, to the issue of, you know, balancing the, you know, benefit to the applicant versus the, the impact on the, on the neighborhood. And I think, um, in, in that, um, I think, for me, it tips, um, slightly, but, but tips towards approving the variance. And I, I don't know, is, um, the, um.
Yeah, I think, I agree.
Carmen, are you, are you comfortable approving this variance or?
No.
No, okay, that's, I.
Why not?
I, I anticipated that. Phyllis, I don't, what, what is your sense on this?
I think that it's probably the only solution. I don't think that they, I, I kinda second your thought. Nobody went and said, let's make the eight-foot fence nine feet.
Right.
On purpose. I, you know, it was the topography. And so, I, I, I would maybe wonder if adding more soil, but I don't think that's going to do anything other than fix the visual of, you know?
Um, I, I agree. And, and, you know, Paul has pointed out, in the past, we've, we've, we've said you can't.
Right.
You can't get a bigger fence simply by putting it on top of a.
And I don't think they wanted a bigger fence.
They're certainly welcome to, to fill, to fill that in for their own aesthetics, but not.
Yes.
Not to comply with the code.
Certainly, yeah, yeah. I think we're, we're, I think we're all in agreement on that one.
Uh, Larry, you want to?
I guess, oh, well, Paul said that even at eight, even at eight feet, it would be pretty much the same effect.
Okay.
And that.
Yeah, it's, it's still a big fence, yeah. And Betty, under.
Uh, you're right. I mean, the part of me just wants to find a solution, but there really isn't one. They either has to come down, or we have to grant them the variance. I'm not inclined to make them go to the expense of taking it down and replacing it. So that's the only thing we can do, really.
Okay.
And if something does happen to this fence, if it gets blown away by something, we can, um, condition it.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, um, let's see here. Okay, um, I, I, I move the findings as, as followed. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of the area variance. The, the board finds that the fence as currently installed does produce, um, some change to the, uh, character of the neighborhood. But the board notes that, um, an eight-foot fence that complies with the code would produce, um, similar, um, changes. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some other method feasible. The board finds that the, uh, purpose of the fence, uh, to provide, uh, privacy and to, um, provide a, 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 a safe enclosure for, uh, some pets, can be achieved only by, uh, the creation of a fence. Three, whether the, the requested area variance is substantial. The board find that the, um, the, the height of the fence above the, um, required, or, or the, 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 um, eight-foot allowed by the, by the code, was, um, the result of an installation, uh, on a uneven topography and that the, um, height of the fence, uh, above the ground varies from, uh, place to place and was not intended to be, um, a conscious violation of the code. Nonetheless, the board finds that, um, the fence as it currently exists is, in some places, fourteen inches above the allowed eight feet. Whether the proposed, um, variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Uh, the board finds that any fence, um, has a, a certain, um, impact, um, on the neighborhood. The, um, environmental impacts, um, are likely to be, um, virtually nonexistent. But that, um, uh, the, the board finds that the added height, in this case, does not pose, um, a significant impact on the environment. And, uh, finally, whether or not the, um, the difficulty here is self-created. It, it's certainly self-created in the sense that the applicant, um, chose to install a fence. The, um, fact that it violates the eight-feet, um, ordinance, the board finds was, um, the, um, not the intent, but was the consequence of the, uh, terrain and the, um, method in which the fence is constructed and installed. So move. Okay, if there are any changes that anybody wants to, to make to that? Okay, if not, um, Betty, you want to do the?
Did he, did you add the peaks? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we didn't condition it.
To this fence?
Um, we'll, we'll add that as a condition to, to the, um, to the main motion.
Okay.
Okay, I moved that, mm, thanks. I moved that we, uh, I make a motion to approve the area variance as requested in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and asked the board to adopt its findings as set forth by the chairman.
Right, but in your motion.
In addition, in addition, we would, um.
Add as, as, uh, con- conditions.
That if something.
That the, um, the variance applies to the.
Current fence.
Current fence. And that if any changes are made to the fence in the future, it must comply with the code requirements.
That's good.
See, is that, do we want to do a, anything else?
I guess that's, that'll do.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion to approve with, um, condition, um, the variance in item number two, a variance to allow an existing fence to remain at its present height. Okay, any, there's further discussion?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Did you hear what he said on the way out? I'll see you in court. Is there any, no, is there any recourse he can take? I'm just curious.
Okay, you, you, you would have to consult an attorney on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Didn't have anything to do with.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, all right, so we, we have motions made and seconded to approve with conditions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Christine.
Christine, okay. All right, um, okay, if there's no further discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. And I would just, and just like, as a statement for the record, I don't think that the, uh, uh, person installing the fence or, or the applicants, I think they, they kind of knew that this was going to go over, uh, eight feet and, and all of that. So I, I, I think that, that, that's one thing that I, I'm really opposed to this fence.
Okay.
And, um, um, but I also know that if you, if you installed a, a smaller fence, that it would still have the same compound effect.
Okay, thank you. And let me just note that there was one recusal among the regular board members and that, um, that Phyllis, no, Phyllis is, is the, was the voting member for this one. Okay. Item three, Brian and Christine Highland, uh, Five Hollow Lane. This is a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment in a one-family dwelling. Okay, um, as, um, findings, um, that I move that the board adopt as findings for the, um, uh, accessory apartment special use permit specifications, the, um, answers, um, provided by the applicant on pages two and three of the application with the change that, um, the apartment will be identified for emergency services in, in a manner acceptable to the nine-one-one, um, response requirements. Okay, then.
Second.
Okay, and then we also need to look at, um. Okay.
It meets all the criteria.
Yeah, it meets all the criteria. And I, I won't go through all of those. It's, 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 it's very clear on there. Then there are also some general, um, requirements for, um, for special use permits. A, that there should be no detrimental effect by the establishment of such use on other uses in the district. The board finds that the creation of an accessory apartment at, um, Five Hollow Lane will have no detrimental effect, um, on the, um, other uses within the district. The footprint of the existing building will be unchanged. B, um, such use will be in harmony with the orderly development of the district and the location, and it will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent lands. Uh, the board finds that because there will be no external change, it will have no effect on the, uh, development and use of adjacent properties. C, that all structures, equipment, materials shall be reasonably accessible for fire and police protection. The board finds that, um, the, um, existing structure, um, is accessible for fire and police protection, and this will not change. D, that the use, uh, meets the prescribed requirements for the district in which it's located. The board finds that, um, the existing structure, which will be unchanged, meets, um, the, um, zoning requirements for, um, lot lines and off-street parking. So move.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, there's been a motion, or, okay, those are the findings, so, um. Okay, uh, Larry, you want to, uh, let's see, we need the special use permit.
Move to, to approve the request for a special use permit set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony gathered during the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the recommendations of the chairman, and that it meets the criteria set forth in the town code.
Second.
Okay, um, motion been made and seconded to approve a special use permit to allow the creation of an accessory apartment in a one-family dwelling. This is an unlisted action, so, um, I move that the, um, ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purposes of the evaluate, environmental evaluation of the application in item three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, I further move that the, um, the ZBA, um, determines that the application in item number three, um, based on the criteria set forth in the, um, environmental impact short form, that the proposed action will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, recusals, okay. So we now have the, um, application for a special use permit made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recusals, okay, the special permit is approved. Item number four, Daniel Bova, fifty-two Carmen Drive. It's a variance that would allow the construction of an addition to be located eighteen point two-five feet from the rear lot line where thirty feet is required. It's a type-two action. The, uh, I move that, um, as findings, um, one, uh, the board finds that there will be no undesirable change, uh, produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, um, by this action. The board notes that this is a corner lot and that the proposed addition is actually going to be, um, at, at, at the furthest point away from the, from the roads. Uh, the board also notes that, um, the adjacent properties are, um, heavily wooded and that the nearest, uh, structures to the, um, addition, um, are at a considerable distance away. Uh, the board further finds that the benefit sought by the application, applicant, cannot be, um, achieved by, um, another method. And particularly, the board notes that the placement of this addition depends on the, in, the configuration of the existing house and that, um, that particular corner of the, uh, of the house is the only place where it makes sense to, um, put, uh, an additional, uh, bedroom. The board finds that the, um, the, um, request is, um, is not substantial. The, um, the distance to the back property line is still eighteen feet and the back property line is essentially, um, along a heavily wooded area. For the, board notes that the, um, proposed, um, Uh, four, the board notes that the, um, proposed, um, action, um, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, um, it's, um, actually, will, will, will make a m- minor difference in the, in the backyard. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the board finds that it's self-created i- in the, in, to, to the extent that, um, the applicant wishes to build an addition, um, but, um, this does not preclude the granting of a variance. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so with those as findings, Paul, do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. It's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by the board members, and the findings just made.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, motion to approve the variance in item number four's been made and seconded. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item, item four is approved. Item number five, John and Laura O'Guard, uh, two Meyerwood Drive, this is a variance to allow the construction of an addition to be located twenty-one feet eleven and three-quarter inches from the rear property line where thirty feet is required. This is a type-two action. Um, the, um, the precision in this variance is, is astounding. Some, some, somebody is going to worry about that three-fourths of an inch. Okay, um, all right, any, um, discussion on this? I think this is, this is pretty straightforward. Um, uh, in terms of findings, um, actually, I, I would, um, I move that we adopt as findings the, um, applicant's, um, responses to the five items found in pages two and three of their application. Um, the, um, yeah, I, I guess I would only add in, in, um, under number one, in the character of the neighborhood, um, the, the board notes, uh, from its, um, um, site visits, that, that many of the other, um, houses in this neighborhood, um, have been enlarged over the years, and that, that this, the proposed, um, action here is, is very consistent with what has happened in, in, in other, um, how, homes in the neighborhood.
It's actually screened on three sides. There's a row of hedges all the way across the back, and it's fenced on both sides.
Okay, so, I, let, okay, let's, we can, we can add that to, um, actually, for what its impact on the neighborhood would be. Yeah, it is, it is well-screened. Okay, um, so I would, I would move those as the findings.
Second.
Okay, um, who, did Betty, you second that?
Christine did.
Christine, okay. All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, uh, let's see, Tony, make the motion.
I moved, I moved that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearings, result of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as determined in the application, uh, items one through five.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, motion to, um, approve item number five, made in second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, we, um, item number five is approved. Item number six is adjourned to next month, and this brings us to item number seven, uh, industrial retro fifteen Victory Lane. Um, this, um, is a request for, um, three variances, um, one, to allow the creation of a lot of one-point-eight-five acres where a minimum of four acres is required, um, to allow the creation of a lot with a depth of two-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-nine-nine feet, uh, where four-hundred feet is required, and which, um, would, uh, not have, and a variance to allow a lot, um, that does not have a minimum of two-hundred feet of frontage along a public street or highway. Okay, um...
I think the applicant did a good job on one through five, if you...
Okay, um, okay, the first thing we have to do is, um, the environmental, um, issue. Um, the, uh, lot line changes, um, are, um, considered, um, unlisted actions, and, uh, in this case, uh, this involves an uncoordinated review. The, the, the planning board is doing the environmental review for the, for the, for the project as a whole, so, what we're doing has no impact or connection, really, with the, the, um, approval process for the, for the, for the, the larger project, the, uh, McDonald Heights, um, project. So, um, for, um, purposes of, uh, I move that the, the, um, ZBA declare itself lead agency for the purpose of reviewing, for the environmental review of the application, uh, in, in item seven, um, which is, uh, a, um, lot line revision.
Second.
Kim?
Mr. Chairman, is an uncoordinated, I'm sorry to interrupt, is an uncoordinated review, I don't believe you're a lead agency, let's just be...
Um...
I, I, I...
Well, that's okay. Um, what we've typically, technically, even if it's an agency of one, there, there's no need to circulate for lead agency, so if we're doing in...
But the planning board is also...
Lead agi...
They're also an involved agency, that's, that's my only...
Uh, yeah. And I was about to point out, actually, that the, um, planning board is dealing with the lot line realignment as well, so, um, my request would be that the board, um, pass or discuss a motion that would classify it as an unlisted agency, and then find that it has, um, the, do a neg deck in essence, that there's a determination of non-significance. And, unlisted action, uncoordinated review, and then this, as far as this board's concerned, it's a determination of non-significance.
Okay. Would you create that motion?
Certainly. Um, uh, the motion would be that the, both zoning board of appeals finds that the action is an unlisted action, and that an uncoordinated review is appropriate for this action. That would be the first part.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second part of it would be the standard neg deck that we typically do, um, however, in this instance, uh, some of the things that the board should consider as part of its neg deck, um, is the, one of the issues is the proposed intensity of the use. In this case, there was testimony from the applicant that there really isn't, um, any greater intensity as a result of this action, because the other portion of the lot is not able to be developed in any way, so that the site plan that was previously granted pretty much covered the area of the lot that would be developed that is still remaining within the lot. The other things that the board should consider as part of its neg deck would be the fact that the, um, sensitive areas, whether it's archaeologically or ecologically, are part of the parcel that would not be, um, subject to development, not part of the one-point-eight-five acre parcel that the board is seeking to develop. So, for those reasons, I think that it's appropriate, where the board's so inclined, to have a determination that there are no significant adverse impacts from this action.
So move.
Second.
Okay, um, thank you, Lisa, but, um, it, the, and I, I just note that there is, uh, an, um, EAF short form in your, in your packet, and if you look through that, um, there are really only a couple of issues, um, that, that would be at all relevant, because, um, as a result of changing the lot line, we're not making any physical change at all to the, to the property. So, all of those issues about, um, you know, wetlands and protected species and all that is, is totally irrelevant, because as a result of what we do, there will be no physical changes. But, um, one of the items is, um, it asks if the, the change, uh, would, um, make, uh, would, 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 um, be in any way contrary to the, the town's master plan, um, and, um, in the, in this case, it, it would not. I mean, it's, it's zoned, um, industrial, and, uh, that, that doesn't change. Um, and then the other was, would there possibly be an increase in the intensity of the use? Well, in this case, no, because, um, well, actually, Lisa addressed that in her comments. So, in, in, in terms of, of the, um, issues that were required to review in the, um, environmental assessment, um, the, the, the very, the various elements are either irrelevant to this, or, um, or the, the proposed action does, does not create, does not raise any, um, any, any, that's, um, change, really, significant change of any kind. Okay, um, so, um, on, on the, the motion, which essentially says that there is no, uh, significant environmental impact, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Um, so now we come to the, um, motion itself. Let's see, is it, Carmen? Are you up?
Here we go. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven, and this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in a public hearing, and results of site visits by board members and the staff report.
Second.
Okay, and I think, let's, let's put in here, Betty, I think you suggested that the, as findings, uh, we adopt the answers provided by the applicant on pages two and three, um, of their application. So, so with, if that's okay with you, Carmen, we'll just add that as the findings.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you also?
There's a, there's another, um, exhibit A, which also addresses the finding.
It, it just adds different findings for the, in essence, the street frontage, the...
Okay, so...
The, it, the, exhibit A covers minimum lot area and lot depth. Pages two to three cover the street frontage issue, so...
Okay.
The uniform, the universe would be pages two and three plus exhibit A.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll add that to the findings, yes. Okay, that, that's right, they're in two different parts. Okay, good. All right, um...
Is that the end?
All those in there?
Yeah, so, um, Carmen made the motion to approve, um, item number seven, and the, who seconded it?
Second.
Okay, Christine? All right, if there's no further discussion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, let's see, there were no, there were no recusal. Okay, okay, that brings us to the end of the, um, agenda, and there being no other items before us, a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.